You can go ahead and start Kelly.
Okay, all right, okay, welcome everyone to the Wednesday, August 12th caucus of the Albany Common Council. JR, can you just let me know who's who's here? I'm gonna tell it for the record.
Sure, so present are Councilmember O'Brien, Councilmember O'Igo, Councilmember Ballerin, President Ellis, Majority Leader Farrell, Councilmember Robinson, Councilmember Love, Councilmember Dosche, Councilmember Conti, Councilmember Frederick. Guests are Chief Hawkins and Pete Chee in from the staff part. We have Brett Williams, Assistant Corporation Counsel, myself, Research Counsel, and Danielle Gillespie, and Senior Legislative Aid, Michelle Andre, and City Clerk Danielle Gillespie.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. So what I wanted to do was that the chief's gotta be someplace else. I invited him here to kind of update us on gun violence and talk about what the Albany Police Department's doing to contend and combat this. So with that, I will turn it over to the chief. And after the chief speaks, we'll members have questions that you can ask questions.
All right, thanks, Councilman Kimbrel. And I'll be quick because I'm sure there's some questions for me regarding some of the stuff. But I just want to start off by just going over what we're seeing in terms of the data right now. And so far this year, we've had 10 homicides. Our violent crimes are up 13%. Our property crimes are down 15%. And overall, our crime is down about 10%. But of course, but of course, the part that gives us cause for concern is the shootings that we've had in the city. And so far this year, we've had 92 people shot in the city compared to 95, 25 this time last year. And we've had over 175 confirmed shots fired. Last year, this time, we had about 160, we had about 65. And of those shootings that we've had, seven of them resulted in homicides. We've had quite a few arrests of individuals involved in these. We've had 57 gun arrests this year. We've recovered over 56 firearms this year. So we're taking guns off the street. And our, in terms of how we're trending right now, we we saw a substantial increase in activity right around May of this year, and that coincided with COVID. And toward the end of May, with the civil unrest as a result of the murder out in Minneapolis with George Floyd. And so things spiked substantially in June, and we continued with high numbers into July. And now the numbers are starting to moderate quite a bit. One of the things that has given us some cause for optimism with this is that we're starting to see that the pace of the activity that we've seen has started to slow dramatically. For example, usually during this time of year, we see an increase in activities, a significant increase in activity on normal summers between June and July. Actually, going from May to June to July, usually there's a significant increase in activity. And this year, as we're starting to regroup and rebalance, we're, we actually, from June to July, we actually saw activity drop substantially. Now, we still, again, any violent crime, any homicide is is one too many. And and they all give us cause for concern. But when we're talking about how we're trending and how we're getting ourselves back on track after those events that we had, those, you know, just this shocking sequence of events that we had with COVID and with the civil unrest, we're starting to get back to where we normally would be in terms of activity this time of year. We've did a heat map of where the activity is happening. And the activity is happening in pretty much two or three or four different areas of the city. We've looked at my response times to the activities that we've seen. And for all of the shootings that we've had in the city, our response times were, the average response time was under two minutes. And in many cases, it was zero because we were right there when it happened. So it's showing that we have officers who are in the areas when these activities are occurring. And and again, in many cases, the officers are right there. And in in many cases, the officers actually witnessed some of those events. And so going for what we, what our strategy is, is to simply get a little bit more active in terms of some of the things that we were doing. But during the months of March and eight, essentially between March and and July, end of July, we had fewer active type things that we were doing simply because it wasn't safe. We were trying to figure out how to police the city in a way where our officers would not infect members of the community and and also where the officers would mitigate the risk of the officers getting infected. We had to be very careful on how we were policing during this period of time, simply because there was a very tense environment, a very tense atmosphere. And so we're very careful about how we were interacting with our community during that period of time. And even as we go forward, we're very aware and cognizant of the fact that it's still a very tense atmosphere out there. But we now have some self-awareness, and we can, we have plans on operating in the environment that we have right now. So we still have partnerships with the Sheriff's Department and the State Police. Sheriff's Department is providing deputies every shift for us. State Police, usually on the weekends, they provide deputies to ride with our officers. We have some very strong partnerships with our federal partners, the ATF, DEA, the FBI. And we've, we're building some federal cases against some of these individuals that were involved in some of the violence. And we have made a number of very significant arrests of violent individuals over the last month or month and a half or so. And that coupled with the, some of the partnerships that we have in the community in order to address some of these things, we we think is was contributing to the downward trend in terms of activity that we're seeing. So those are the numbers. You know, again, I'll in there because I'm sure there's some questions that council members have, and I'll be glad to take those questions.
I can't see hands up, so.
I saw Joyce Love put her hand up first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So there was a shooting early this morning. And I know that was kind of isolated. But there was a shoot, was there another shooting this afternoon?
Yeah, there was, there was one, so right, right around two or three o'clock or so. I don't have much details on that one. But you know, a fellow was shot, I believe, in his leg, non-life threatening. Apparently, from what he told the officers, he knows the guy who shot him. We don't have much details on why he was shot or any other information about the source of the shooting. But clearly, this was another case of two individuals who know each other and had some, some sort of feud that resulted in gunfire.
Okay, and where was it at, uptown or downtown?
I believe this one was uptown, Joyce. I gotta get some more information. Again, it was, you know, as I was in in my vehicle, I heard the run go out, and I haven't had a chance to get updated by my commanders on that one yet.
Okay, so I just got one other question. Some of the neighbors are saying, calling me over the weekend, and I got quite a few calls today. They want to know, why is there not officers stationed at some of these hotspots?
And right now, we have some out there, Joyce. And but but even before this, we've periodically, over, over the last year, even this was even before COVID, we've had officers who were stationary at these hotspots. Now, you know, we couldn't do it, as we all know, you know, for a prolonged period of time. But over this past, over this past year, several, several times, we've had it, in fact, we've used some of our grant funding that we normally use for other things in order to do that. And so it's, it's, it's been done.
Okay.
We'll do that, you know, when it's appropriate going forward also.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Robinson has his hand up.
Good evening, Chief.
Good, how are you? Good evening.
Well, question, how are the give funds, those grant funds being utilized to reduce some of the violent activity in the area?
But usually, we, there's overtime details for officers. And so we usually have, if there's some hotspots, for example, like what's happening right now, we'll assign officers to those hotspots on an overtime basis. And, you know, so we've been utilizing those quite a bit. You know, obviously, those funds are not unlimited. So, you know, they, you know, they don't go on for a prolonged period of time. But certainly, when we have incidents and occasions like we're dealing with right now, then we can do that. They're also used for, you know, special events. But obviously, we're not doing a lot of special events right now because of COVID. But so for the most part, right now, with with those are being used for is for overtime details for officers for hotspots.
Okay, so most of, most, okay, so most of the grant funds are going towards overtime, not towards any type of programming, creation of new programming to be rolled out? That's just what.
Yeah, well, not, well, not so much right now with program. Right now, most, most of those, now, we've, again, some of those funds are being used to, to pay salaries for, for example, our violence prevention coordinator and some of the, some other staff that are associated with that. So in that sense, they they're used for programming in, in a way. But for the most part, when we have some, when we have those funds, some of those excess funds, we're using those to get some increased presence out on the streets.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Conti has his hand up.
Thanks, Chief. Quick question, I think we recently got a staffing report. But my question was, what is your, your current level of staffing or the current status, you know, vis a vis vacancies? Not necessarily including those officers in the academy. And how is that impacting your ability to deal with the current situation?
Right now, we're, I believe, last I got a report, we were 50, I believe, was 55 vacancies at this point, not including those that are in the academy. We started out at the academy with 30, and now we're down to 22. And from what I understand, those 22 that we have are 22 solid candidates, and we're creating those remaining candidates to reach out the academy. The academy ends in January of 2021. And immediately after that academy finishes, the plan is to start another one right on the heels of that one with a larger class. Prior, prior to COVID, our plan was to have an academy class of somewhere around 50 recruits. And because of some of the budgetary complications that resulted from COVID, we had to scale that back to 30. And again, we lost, you know, a few from, from there. So, you know, having some talks with city administration, the plan is, once we start this new academy class, we want to hire a few more, is what we were actually planning in anticipation of attrition during the academy. And in terms of how has it impacted, it has impacted staffing on the road. What, you know, just like Council Robinson talked about, one of the things that has helped is that we've had some ability to pay overtime to officers to make sure that we have the same amount of officers in the role that we would have if we were fully staffed. And in addition, in addition to that, we have some help from the Sheriff's Department and from the State Police to help augment some of our staffing as well.
A quick question, just an observation on the number of officers you started with the academy of 30 or down to 22. And I guess understand that you sometimes lose people along the way. Is that, is there any particular reason why you lost eight recruits? Or is that number something, a normal attrition that you would have experienced, or is there something else going on?
We have, if we start with 30, then, you know, norm, we would expect to lose three or four, maybe five. Is typically, that's what our attrition rate is. This one, I think, is a little unusual because some of these recruits were leaving because they, in our exit interviews with them, they just simply said that this wasn't the job for them. They said it was different than they anticipated. I think that these recruits coming on board at a time when there's the civil unrest, there's the increased tension between police and communities. And they're seeing this stuff amplified even more so than they normally would. And now they're right in it. I think that caused a few of those recruits to have some cause for concern and second guess their decision to start off. So right now, it's a complicated situation with recruiting because it's tough to convince a lot of our young people right now, particularly our young people of color to want to enter this profession at this time. Now, I think what will help us here in our city is this cadet program that we'll be starting up. And we call it a cadet program, but really it's a police officer internship program. We're going to bring in these young men and women from our communities to come in as interns, basically, and learn the job, learn, you know, learn the, the environment, the industry, for us to get a chance to know them, let them work with us for a couple of years. And unless they are old enough to become police officers in the, to the academy, we, we think that that will help with retention. We'll get some, some young men and women who are invested in the community. And we're hopeful that we'll get some more young women, women and young men and women of color to join us under, through that program.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I have a question, and then I'm going to go to Derek Johnson and then Mr. Nani. Chief, you know, you gave stats, and we understand that. But when we look at hearing from you, you know, stats are stats. What we want to hear is more concrete effort on how are we tackling this recent uptick in violence? Even though the stats may say one thing, it's the, the feeling of not, of people not being confident that they, their kids can go outside. This business is not feeling confident that nothing's going to happen to their business. So, you know, we can appreciate the stats, but that stats aren't going to help the confidence of our citizens in this city. So what, what I think citizens would want to hear is, and this is my question, we have the state and sheriffs in our city. How are we deploying them? How are we using them? I know council members, I think Mr. Mr. Robinson at one time, because we keep saying we're down officers, but we have reinforcements from the Sheriff's Department. How are we deploying them? Are we deploying them at our hotspots? How are, I think people want to hear that. How are we deploying the resources that came from the sheriff's office and the State Police? And and how are they being effective, helping out with with these issues that are happening? Because people want to know, what are we actively doing? Like, how are we actively staffing? How are we actively making sure certain patrols are in certain areas? Those are the things people want to hear about, to make them feel comfort, make them have confidence that things are really happening. And so that's my question. How are we deploying the sheriffs and the State Police who are in our city and how we're using it?
So the sheriffs, again, every shift they provide, I believe it's either six or seven deputies per shift. And those deputies are teamed up with Albany officers. And so they're riding as double units with the officers. And so that gives us a couple of, so for every, every scene or every call for service or every sort of activity that those officers are involved in, it gives us more police presence during those times. And it also, in a way, helps us with, with the forcing of overtime or what we call the endorsing of officers. It, it, it mitigates those pressures. So we, because we always, we, because we usually have minimum staffing with our officers because of this extra help that we have with, with the deputies and with the troopers. So it helps in that sense. So we have officers who are, who are fresher in that sense. But it, but it, and it also, when you're talking, what are we doing specifically in order to address some of these things? One thing that is, is very important for the community to know is that we're identifying the individuals who are involved in the violence, and we're taking those individuals off the street. What we've seen consistently is that there is a very, very small group of individuals who are responsible for a large percentage of the crime in, in our city. And that could mean individuals who actually reside in Albany, or it can be individuals from Schenectady or Troy or elsewhere. And we have been very successful over the last month and a half in having some very significant key arrests of violent people in the community. That tends to calm some things. And it since, tends to send a message to others that there are consequences for that sort of behavior. And, and we're making sure that, that we have officers in areas where this, where this activity is occurring. Now, I understand that there is some concern about police presence and, and some, particularly in some of these hotspots. And that was one of the reasons why, you know, I know data doesn't tell the story. And, and I really don't rely on that a whole lot when messaging about some of these things. But the data really does say something in that case. Because when you look at our response times to the violence, the shootings that we've seen in our community, we're there within less than 120 seconds. And in many cases, we, we were right there when it happened. And so what that tells me is that the officers are there. We've got officers in the hotspots. We've got officers who are actually patrolling in these areas where we're seeing this increased activity. You know, these individuals, obviously, are very brazen. In some cases, they didn't even know the officers were there. Sometimes they, you know, obviously, they would wait until the officers went around the corner, and then they would do what they had to do. But, for example, in the latest shooting at First and Quail, about five to 10 minutes before that shooting occurred, you can see an officer riding down the street right in the, right in that area where that shooting occurred. So officers are there. We've had several incidents where the officers actually witnessed a shooting.
Yes.
And took people into custody. And so, and so, you know, Council President Ellis, you know, when I think that.
Well, I do have a follow up to, to that. Our officers ride alone, sheriffs ride alone. Why are they, why are they teaming up? Why aren't they riding, if you have more cars out there? Sheriffs could ride alone, Albany officers can ride alone. Because our officers do ride alone. So why would we, if we have more manpower, why would we put them in two in one car and not have one in each car, which would create more cars and more presence?
Two reasons.
What is the reasoning for that?
What, with two, two reasons for that. Number one, especially as we were coming off the civil unrest that we had after that murder out in Minneapolis. The streets were very tense. They were heightened emotions. And so a decision was made that we wanted officers doubled up. Safer for. It was, it was safer for officers. It was safer for the community to have, if they called for service, to have two officers who were responding together. That was number one. Two, we did not want our shit, we did not want outside agencies, officers who are not from this community out patrolling the city by themselves and responding to calls for service. These are, these are officers who who aren't familiar with the city. They, they don't have that same type of training and, and, and appreciation for what's happening in the city as officers who are trained in the city of Albany. So we wanted those, we wanted those deputies and those troopers riding with officers so that we can provide better level of service and not, and not compromise police community relations by having officers who are not from here being point of contact with issues in the city.
Well, I, you know, I can appreciate that. But I think that's a discussion we, we, we should figure out with the Sheriff's Department, to figure out how we can have people, more people on the streets and not two in a car. With that being said, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Council President, thank you. Chief Hawkins, how you doing this evening?
I'm doing good. How you doing, Councilman Johnson?
All right, I just want to follow up with Council President. The point that he made is because a lot of times we hear two different stories, you know. You say seconds, right? But I just got a call today about the shooting on Third Ave. And they called about the car that got shot up, and the, and the people didn't come until the next morning. So it's different, it's different things that you hear. I wasn't there, so I can't say, as a matter of fact, what happened. But it's just, you know, it's interesting that it's always two different stories, you know. The story that you hear from the actual person that's going through it, and then the story that we hear in response to our, the concerns that we share. But one of the questions, the main question that I wanted to ask was, how much does it cost to put someone through the academy? How much, how much does it cost the city to put someone through the academy?
And I have to tabulate that cost, Councilman. You know, obviously, we're running our own academy, so we're not paying any outside sources. So our, our cost would be the, the cost to backfill the trainers that we have in the academy. It would be whatever, you know, utility costs or another cost associated with the rental of the building that we have right now. And I would, I would have to actually tabulate that cost. Now, typically, if, if you're sending officers to an outside place for an academy, you're talking anywhere between $7,000 to $9,000 usually to have recruits trained outside.
So thank you for that number, all right? So I guess what I'm looking at is because sometimes I hear people don't take the job because they take a job somewhere else. And I'm looking to see if we could start talking about a non-compete clause for, for us spending money, investing money into folks. And, you know, within however many weeks they have a change of heart, I think that we should have a conversation about the city being able to receive some type of repayment because we are investing, you know, knowledge and money into individuals that we're not going to get back. And if they're just, you know, choosing to go find employment somewhere else, I think that that's something that would be, you know, protective of the city. And then also, it sends a stern message that, you know, we, we're expecting you to, you know, work for the city. And I know a lot of industries, they have non-compete causes. And, you know, it, it protects and it helps. And, you know, to, to hear people so interested in the job. And then, you know, and, and, you know, I guess is, we don't want the wrong people out there. But we also don't want to use taxpayers' money in the, in the, in the wrong way either. So I, I was hoping that, that's something that could be taken into consideration so that we're not looking at losing, you know, 50 plus thousand each class.
You know, Councilman, I wholeheartedly agree with you. You know, it's frustrating for us to train because essentially, we're training officers for some of these other departments. For example, Gilderland.
Yeah.
Gilderland, they, they never have to train an officer because they put out, you know, because their pay is so much higher than some of the surrounding agencies. You know, when they put out a posting for a police officer position, they, they're just hiring lateral officers. You know, they never have to put anybody through the police academy. So we train them and other departments train them, and they go to some of these other places. And so I, yes, I agree with you. It's, it's very, very frustrating.
Mr. Nani.
Thank you. Thank you, Police Chief Hawkins. I just want to say thank you so much for your responses relates to any type of shooting that occur in the city, your responsiveness to let elected officials in those respective neighborhoods know. Mike, I have a few questions. My first one is more so. My first one is more so relates to, is there anything that you believe that the mayor could be doing more of to assist with your effort to address gun violence?
I can't think of anything more than the mayor can do. The mayor has supported me with whatever I need. And, you know, the issues that we're seeing with gun violence, you know, there's several sources for it and there, you know, there's some deep-rooted causes for it and, you know, we just got to kind of work our way through those things.
My next question is, is this violence something that is beyond the capability of APD to address as it is currently funded and is also structured?
Repeat your question so I can answer correctly.
Is this violence something that is beyond the capability of APD to address as it relates to current funding and structure?
No, it is not beyond the capabilities of APD. In other words, we have the capabilities to address what's happening in the city right now.
Okay. Why are these incidents occurring with such frequency? What can the city do more of to prevent these moving forward?
Well, there's a lot of reasons for the frequency of it. You know, a lot of it is because there was such a void on the streets for almost three months. And we had individuals who decided to, to take up some fumes that they had with others and there were no witnesses on the streets. And the police officers had minimal contact because of COVID. There was, you know, right on the heels of that, we had civil unrest that changed the dynamic between policing and members of the community and it changed policing styles. So there is a very complicated mix of factors that happened that contributed to this. And then we look into some of the social causes of what we're seeing. You know, here's the fact of the matter. We have, and it's primarily young men. We have young men in our community and not all in Albany, some from Schenectady, some from Troy, and some from other places. But these young men are absolutely determined to kill each other. And they're not trying to maim each other, they're not trying to injure, they're not trying to send messages. They are flat-out trying to execute each other. And when you have a mentality like that, then oftentimes the law enforcement itself cannot solve that type of problem. Now, we can be a huge part of it by identifying those very violent ones and taking them off the street, making sure we have police presence in order to deter activity and making sure we have good community relations to make, so that we can share information with the good people in the community to address it. But we have an extremely violent element, an extremely violent and undisciplined element out there that are trying to execute each other. And we've seen it. These, you know, these, these aren't normal shootings that we're seeing in a lot of these cases. These are individuals who have executed other young men in our streets. So what can, what can we do to address it? Well, we can continue doing what we're doing. And that's why, you know, point well taken, Council President Ellis. You know, the numbers don't tell the story. But I think when we're talking about this whole issue, we have to, this is a very dark issue. We have to let the community know as part of our messaging that there is progress being made and not that we're waving the flag of success. But people want to know, just like Council, just like Council President Ellis said, people want to know that something is happening. And one piece of something is happening is what are we seeing in terms of frequency of violence? And so that's a part of it. And so we've got to look at that part of it. And so we're making some progress, not nearly enough, but because of the way that we're trending right now, I'm confident that we'll be back to where we normally would be during this time of year.
Also, Chief, what would have to happen? How many shootings, how many deaths would it have to take for us to declare a state of emergency here in the city of Albany and just say, admit that this is out of our hands, this is out of our control?
We're not there, nearly there. I, I don't know what it would take, I don't know what that number is. I think, I don't think it's an actual number. I think it's, it's, you have to look at capability of, of your resources. You have to look at how things are trending. And that's why it's important to me to see, how are we trending? What exactly is happening? We know anecdotally that things are bad. You know, I hear it, you all hear it, people are concerned. Anytime we have a shooting, you know, homicide, they're rightfully unsettled by that. But we need to know exactly what is happening. Where are we going? If we're trending in a way where it's, it's, the trajectory is where we're out of control, then I think we may have to have that conversation. We're not, that's not how our trend line is right now. We're trending in a way where we're clearly, clearly moving back in terms of activity to where we were pre-COVID. And that tells me that, you know, that sequence of events that we had, you know, three months ago or so, it really shook. I mean, you know, it shook every sector of our society. And, you know, everybody's operating differently. And it certainly shook the way we operated and it certainly shook, and it certainly impacted opportunists. Because that's how, that's who some of these young men are that are involved in this violence. They're opportunists. You know, they waited for an opportunity to get vengeance on, in a very horrific way against others. And now, and now we're starting to rebalance as we can police safely, as we can now get out and engage a little bit more. Now officers are now getting out of the cars and going back to foot patrols like we were doing before. We're engaging more with members of the community. We're starting to see things trend in a positive direction. I think we've got to see that through because I'm optimistic as we move forward that we're going to rebalance and adjust back to where we normally would be.
And I just want to follow up with the Council President's question that was asked as relates to presence in certain communities. As a council member representing the Pine Hill neighborhood, I tell my constituents that we don't have the same frequency at certain neighborhoods in the city. So most of the police resources are being dedicated to those communities. And then I come to council meetings and I hear that, you know, council members feel that there's not enough police presence, there's not police presence in their community. As relates to like, making sure that there's an illusion or even the presence of police officers, what do you think that your department could do better to show that there are foot patrol police officers, not just driving around, but there's foot patrol? And what is the morale within the police department right now?
Well, morale is, is pretty tough. I mean, you know, it's, I mean, I wouldn't say it's rock bottom, but certainly, you know, the events that have occurred have impacted, you know, how, how officers feel. You know, we have officers who feel like their industry is under siege. You know, we, you know, I and other good officers that are around, we all condemn bad behaviors. We do what we can to impact the environment and, you know, the dynamics within our department so that we can relate more, better with our community. And when bad things happen, you know, some of my officers feel like they're under siege and, and they see the unfairness in that piece of it. But they're still going out there, they're still working. You know, as, as we see from our response times, when things are happening, they're right there, we're still making arrests, even when times were tense. And even when it was an extremely emotional atmosphere, you know, the officers were still out there, you know, they were going to domestics and, you know, making traffic stops and taking people off the streets. So they're still doing what they want to do. And I'm glad you asked that, Councilman, because whenever I go to my stations, this is one of the things I always ask, you know, these officers. You know, and I try to ask them informally, how do they feel? You know, how are they dealing with what's happening out here? You know, we're losing officers to retirement because many of them say that, you know, this, you know, they just don't like what's happening with, you know, with law enforcement right now and how law enforcement is perceived and things like that. So I want to know. And most of the officers tell me that, you know, things are tough, but, you know, they're, they're good. You know, they, you know, their spirits are okay. And, and your question about how can we, you know, let people know that there is presence in all areas of the city and what's happening, I think, you know, just, I think the thing we can do better is articulating clearly to members in our community exactly what we're doing. I, I don't, I don't think that, that many members in the community know that our response times are so low for some of these violent incidents. I don't think they know how our officers are deployed. I don't think they know that, you know, exactly how, how and where these officers are being deployed. And so I, I think, you know, education and articulating clearly to members of the community what we're doing is something that we clearly can do better.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chief. We have Ms. Fredericks. And then we have Mr. Ballerin and then Ms. Doshay.
Thank you for being here, Chief.
You're welcome.
So a lot of the recent arrests have publicized the confiscation, the finding of firearms, forgive me. And I'm just curious, since the last update, do you have any insights as to where those firearms are coming from? Or are they, are the perpetrators the owners of those firearms?
Last time we did an analysis of that, we found that most of those firearms, the firearms that we've been confiscating are actually from the state of New York. Now, before I ordered this now, this analysis, I anticipated that we were going to see a flood of weapons from outside the state that have ended up in the hands of some of these bad people that were using them. But, but that's not what the data is telling us. It's, you know, in many cases, these are weapons that are legally owned and were either inappropriately or unlawfully taken from owners, either stolen or in many cases, we're seeing relatives and friends who ended up with weapons that were legally owned and registered and the, you know, and the owners of those weapons didn't know. But, you know, but clearly, you know, like the AK-47 that we took off the street yesterday, that raises some serious cause for concern because that's, you know, that's, you know, from what I understand, it's not, that we think that weapon may have been stolen, but we're still checking that out. But we, we have some very strong ties with the ATF and the DEA in order to help us to, with this whole thing. The ATF, because that's what they specialize in with the weapons. And so if we have weapons who are, that are being, that originate in the state of New York, ATF can be extremely helpful in us helping to track them down and help, help get those weapons off the street. And some of the other federal law enforcement agencies, if we actually have weapons that are crossing state lines. There were a couple of weapons that we have, that we had confiscated last year that came from as far away as Georgia. Had a couple that came from Florida. And those were actually stolen from places outside the state. But it appears that those are the exceptions more than the rule. And now I'm going to have another analysis done of this whole situation to see, you know, exactly how we're trending with that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ballerin?
Thank you, President Ellis, and thank you, Chief Hawkins, for being here. Um, my first question wants to piggyback on something that's already been said. The biggest concern that I get, the biggest issue I get when it comes to public safety is that a lot of people feel they don't see the presence of officers on the streets. And I know we have officers driving and so forth, but I know we had a goal, or a new set of goal, was to have a heavier foot patrol presence in our city. And I wanted to know where we are on that goal and if we are trending in making that a success story versus going back to the old ways.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I'll let you answer this, that question, then I'll follow up with other questions if I can.
Yeah, one of the programs that we were very excited about was the implementation of the, of having regular patrol officers being mandated to spend 20 minutes every shift walking the beat in which they are geographically assigned. And prior to COVID, that was happening and it was, it was very well received. You know, it was some resistance from some of the officers to get out of the cars, but, you know, after, after a while, it became just part of their jobs. And quite frankly, I think they enjoyed it, you know, to be able to just get out and, and not get out of that squad car for a period of time. And it gave, just like you said, more of a sense of presence in some of our neighborhoods. And so that program is still in effect. We have not been doing it so much because of COVID and the civil unrest that, that followed that. But now we're getting back into that. So we'll see more present, more of a presence of officers on foot in our neighborhoods. And that's in combination with our regular beat officers and neighborhood engagement officers as well.
Is that it, Mr. Ballerin? Ms. Doshay?
No, I, I'm sorry. I, I wanted to also ask a question about the arrest. I, there was 57 arrests and there were 92 people shot. How many of those 57 arrests had, were connected to those 92 people that were, that were injured?
So those 57 arrests represent the arrests for gun-related crimes. And so we had actually 174 gun-related, gun-related incidents. And of those 70, roughly 70 were actually shooting incidents. And so it's a combination of both. It's a combination of those who have been shot and also the regular confirmed shots fired that we've had.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Doshay?
Thank you, Chief, for being here. I, I've been in the city for over 40 years and I've never been so concerned for the city. I have lived in the South End in Sheridan Hollow, Arbor Hill, served on the school board. There's never been a time in which I have, I have kind of poo-pooed the idea of people being concerned about walking in any area of the city. And now I'm very concerned about our residents and our children being able to feel safe walking outside of their homes. So I'm appreciative of the fact that you seem to feel like there is a downturn. I am very, I remain very concerned. And I'd want to encourage you and the mayor, the entire police department to think creatively and collaborate with others. You know that you're doing that. But there should be no let up until we really feel confident that people can walk outside their homes again and have their children playing in the streets and on playgrounds and in daycare centers and be safe. So I want to say also that my part goes out to all the residents who have been affected. There's so many hundreds of people that are being affected by this violence. One of the things, the AK-47 confiscation certainly concerned me. Also, however, people in my neighborhood are talking about seeing tags for the Bloods on, I believe on like Myrtle and Lake. And that has been reported online. People are expressing their concerns to me. I think we should be concerned wherever the violence is happening. But this in particular, there's always been a little bit of a mystery to me that the city doesn't want to acknowledge the existence of gangs in their modus operandi and their recruitment mechanisms. And, and the potential need for approaching things differently if we are having gangs that are especially, not just local. but national and, or statewide and migrating from other places, et cetera. So I guess what I'm interested in knowing is, what does the city, what does the APB know about gangs operating in the area? Has there been an uptick in that kind of activity? And what are we doing about, who are we working with? What are we doing that? And, and how do we protect our youth from being recruited into gangs?
And you know, I really, I don't have a problem if, what we call them, we can call them gangs, we can call them groups, we can call them whatever we want. We, we have an, we have an idea of who's involved in the violence in the community. We have an idea of, of some of the sources of the feuds between some of these individuals. And the feuds can range from anything. You know, when we look at our violent crimes, our shootings and our homicides, sometimes the, the, the source is some Facebook or social media disrespect. Sometimes it's drugs. Sometimes it's a feud that happened five or 10 years ago. You know, we're dealing with something right now and we suspect that the source of one of our recent shootings was some, something that happened about five years ago. We have, from what I understand, I'm getting intelligence that there, there are some individuals coming from outside of our city that want to establish or re-establish some drug turf in our city. A lot of it revolves around marijuana. And so we can call it gangs. I don't have a problem if people want to call it a gang, we can call it a gang. But the fact of the matter is, these are young men. They have a common goal, so I guess you can call them a gang because their common goal is they have some sort of feud with some other groups of young men. And their way of resolving this feud and establishing dominance is to try to kill each other. And, and in terms of recruitment, you know, I don't think that we're seeing, we traditionally see, you know, when we saw Bloods and Crips and stuff like that and, and you know, the extra disciples and Chicago, you know, it's not, it's not so, it's not so formal is that, that, that we're seeing. They may call them, if you're seeing some graffiti in some of your areas, some blood-related graffiti in your area, you know, have somebody take a look at it, you know, and again, it's, it's not the traditional type things that we're seeing. What we're seeing now is something a little different than when people traditionally think of a gang. You know, I said, these, they're very loose knit in some, in some ways. So, you know, sometimes you may have one, this, the one group that committed, committed some acts of violence. Two weeks later, it may be two or three different people with them. They have a different source of their, their feud. And so, so it's very fluid and very different. But you know, you know, councilwoman, I, you know, we can call her a gang, that's fine. Fact of the matter is, you know, we've got to do what we're doing right now. And that's identifying who these individuals are and taking the violent ones off the street. Because what we've consistently seen is if we can see violent was the most violent off the street, calms the streets, it, it, it is a message to some of the others that there are consequences for that behavior. And, you know, quite frankly, over these last three months or so, for some of the hardcore violent young men that were, that are out there, they perceive that there weren't going to be, there were not going to be any consequences for some of their behaviors. And, you know, it's not anybody's fault. You know, it's just that there were some conditions that happened that nobody had control over. And it took, and it took some time to be able to safely get back into this. And, and I'll end with this. You know, I don't want it to always talk about what's happening in other places because as somebody, you know, that's been in the city quite a while has, you know, told me and enlightened me. You know, people aren't so interested in, you know, they want to know what's happening in Albany. How are we going to tell things in Albany? You know, they're not so necessarily concerned about Dallas and Chicago and some of those other places. And I'm aware of that. But I think that we've also have to understand we're dealing with this issue right now, that this is a phenomenon that is happening in urban areas across the state of New York and across the country. There are some underlying issues that are impacting similar cities. And it shook cities just like ours all across the country. And it's so, it's not unique to us. I think that we have a solution in a way of addressing this that is better than other cities. Because we've got some strong networks in our city. We've got very, very strong intelligence. We've got some strong relationships with our elected officials and other community members. And we have some incredibly talented detectives and officers. And what we're seeing now is we're starting to get balance. Because let's face it, we were knocked off balance just like police departments everywhere. Now that we're starting to get our balance back, we're seeing that there's some significant progress being made in terms of addressing these. And that's why I say it's important that we don't forget while we're acknowledging that there's bad stuff that's happening. It's important that, that we also give some hope to our people in the city because they want to see that too. They don't want smoke screens. They don't want to hear, hear that there's rainbows and blue skies everywhere. But I think that it's important for our people in the city to understand that there, that we understand what the issues are. We know our challenges were and we have a system in place now to adjust to those challenges. And we're seeing it in the data, seeing it in the activity. And it's clearly trending in a way that I'm confident that we'll be back in terms of activity to where we normally are real soon.
Well, I hope you're right about that. I have two follow-up questions. One is, I, when, when you say that many of these young men do not perceive that there's going to be consequences to their behavior, it seems to me as though some of what, and maybe I'm wrong about this, but it seems to me as though some of what is going on is specifically retaliatory kinds of actions. And so if you have a gun and you're willing to shoot it, I think that that's a very direct potential consequence that somebody's going to try and shoot you if they know something about you. So that's, that's one I'd like to understand why, why that is not perceived as a potential deterrent consequence of this. And the second thing is, I'd really like to know more about the AK-47. Where that came from? What we know about the person who was in possession of that with regard to, is that somebody local? Did they acquire it locally? You know, that's obviously very disconcerting. It's, you know, I know that that happens elsewhere in New York State and not necessarily big cities. But I think it is something stepping up, taking things up. And, you know, and to some extent, you know, one of the most recent shootings, there were so many shells left that they might as well have had an AK-47. So I'd like more information about that.
Yeah, and I'll get you a follow-up on that. But just briefly about the AK-47. Local residents, so both of the individuals who were arrested lived in, in that area. And we're trying to track down right now where exactly that weapon came from, ownership and things like that. So I'll, I'll have more follow-up with that. But the second thing about that arrest of that AK-47, that was another example of officers actually being on the scene. We got a call of a, of shots fired or someone who was potentially preparing themselves to shoot a weapon. And officers were right there. In fact, they were so close that as they rolled up on the scene within seconds, they saw the, the two young men that were involved walking behind that residence and putting that weapon into a garbage can. They actually watched them do it. And so, so that's it, you know, so, so when we, so that's just another example of officers actually being in the area, being in a hotspot and being able to take somebody into custody. But we'll, I'll get you more information about the weapon itself. And in terms of the retaliation piece, you know, councilwoman, they, there's this sense of invincibility. You know, they, a lot of times they feel that if they, if they can assert enough dominance that, that they can, that they can prevent someone else from trying to retaliate against them. You know, it's just this invincibility. And but the other, when we talk about consequences, that's, that's one of the reasons why I think, just a part of it, why we're starting to trend down right now. Because they are starting to see that there are consequences. Because we've made a number of significant arrests of some very, very bad people that were involved in some violence and very influential people. And, and they're starting to see some of the other ones who may otherwise have gotten involved in some, whether they're from Albany or from someplace outside of Albany. They're starting to see that there are legal consequences for creation.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you Chief. We have Derek Johnson and then Mr. Mel Robinson.
Yes, Chief, I had a follow-up. How about getting at least a five-year commitment from recruits? And would you support something like that?
Yes. Yes, I would, yes, I would support it. Yep, I, I think, you know, because that is frustrating to me to train these young men and women and they go someplace for a higher salary or for whatever reason. You know, some, yeah, there may be some, some of these young men and women who, who they know at the very outset, they don't, they don't plan on being here. But they want to get the certification, they want to get the academy, the free academy, and then they use it to go someplace else. So absolutely, I would support that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to follow up on the question that I asked earlier with the gift funding. So the, the grant provides, right now is paying for a position of the anti-violence coordinator? Is that a part-time position or is it a full-time position?
It's a full-time position.
Okay, and that person just solely focuses on anti-violence work?
Yes.
Okay. And so what type of reports does that position have to give regarding, for their position?
That position provides quarterly reports. And I'm not sure if you, I thought you guys were getting those reports, but they, they're quarterly reports that, that apply gun violence and other, other programs that that person is involved in. And coordinating the, we have monthly meetings with all of the gift partners, you know, from all the other agencies involved in this, the person coordinates that. So we have communication and making sure, the key piece of this is, is making sure that when we have arrests, we make arrests of some of these violent individuals that is proceeding, that is, is getting priority in the police office and in our court system to make sure that we get them out of court. So we have a call-in where we bring in individuals who have, we've identified as being either violent or have committed violent acts. And that person coordinates those people as well. And also there's some...
Excuse me Chief, hold on for one second. Someone has an open mic and so while he's talking, it's, can you mute yourself? Can you mute yourself if you're not talking? Thank you. Go ahead Chief.
Okay, thank you. And so those things as well. And, you know, councilman, let me give you, let me get you some follow-up on, because we have it outlined, you know, on a weekly basis. I get a, I get feedback, information. It's not always in writing, but at the very least, it's verbal on a weekly basis on how, with those gift funds, what details those gift funds are being used for. And, and that's why right now, I'm just kind of going off the top of my head with some of this stuff. Because, you know, in some of our recent meetings, I know that most of those gift funds have been used for to, for special details for officers, particularly in some of the hotspots that we're having. But, you know, there's, there's a wide range of uses for those funds. And I can certainly follow up with you to let you know exactly how those funds are being used.
Gotcha. Yeah, and I would also like to know the, the effectiveness of the programs that are currently in existence. And if the anti-violence coordinator has come up with any new programs or has engaged any community stakeholders with coming up with some new programs to address it. Because, you know, if the, the funds are supposed to be used to reduce violence, but yet we're putting more police on the street for overtime to, you know, respond to the violence. So I would like to know more about how that position is, is evaluated and its effectiveness.
Absolutely. And, you know, you, you tell me what form you want this in. I mean, we can have a, we can have a meeting with whoever, you know, you want. And, and we can do that because I, I think it's important that, you know, we have, you know, just like all of us are accountable. Everybody should be accountable. And, and at the very least, individuals who have these key positions should have an opportunity to clearly articulate to stakeholders in the community, you know, what's, what's happening and how they're making an impact. So I'll await the request from you as, in terms, in terms of how, what form you want this in. If you want a simple meeting, you know, give me a call at some point, you know, call my office and I'll, I'll set it up with whoever you want in the meeting.
Gotcha. So I think that's a conversation that maybe the full council should be involved in.
Yes.
Councilman Kimbrough would set something for that up?
Absolutely. Because snug is part of that as well, we'll look into. But I want to get to our statesmen. Joe Igoe, his hand's been up. Sorry Joe, I missed you, my good buddy. So Joe?
Chief, I want to thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. I saw you and the mayor on Channel 13 News. Probably was past the regular news hour, which was a shame because more people would have seen it. This meeting tonight, I think, is great. And a lot of info that we got should go out to the public somehow. I know you said you need better communication, getting this word out there, but you really got to give it some thought. It's the phone calls that I get are people don't have a clue. Some of them are just scared, especially older people, whatever, you know? It just has to get out there. I mean, one thing leads to another and there's getting legs and rumors and this and that. We have to do a better job and I don't know what it is, but give it some thought. Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you and, and well received. And I've heard this a couple of times tonight and it's clearly something that we can do better in terms of articulating exactly what we're doing, what our vision is. And, and more than that, you know, soliciting input from key stakeholders in the community.
Like, like the, some of the people saying, they say they have Nick Soul or something online and they see a shooting and they don't know what happens maybe a few days later and they don't, I guess when arrest is made. But in between, they don't have a clue. And especially elderly, they get worried about it.
Okay. Okay, you're welcome.
Yes, Chief, and I think that is the overriding point of, of what we're hearing is the confidence. You know, I've born and raised in a city and I think Ms. Douchet said it earlier that people just, I've never seen where people didn't feel comfortable having their kids play outside. People didn't feel, don't feel comfortable being outside. And, and until that is gone, we're, I mean, every accountability about what's going to happen, how we do this is going to be questioned. And I'm glad Mr. Robinson brought up that, that point. And I think snug is a part of that as well. They receive a lot of state funding. And, you know, these organizations that have received that funding, as you and the mayor give data, we expect data from them as well to know if, if that money is, is being... uh, to know if, if, if that money is, is, is being, uh, spent well, uh, and doing the job that, that it says it does. Um, and I, and because that's taxpayer dollars that are, that's going to the, those organizations, even though it's coming from the state. But it really is about, uh, people, uh, having a confidence in, in their city, and having a confidence that they can walk outside and feel safe. And unfortunately, we're at that point, and, uh, any way we can support to make sure, um, that doesn't, those feelings are gone, we're here, um, but we really, uh, we really are at a point where we can't, I mean, I can't express it enough, the phone calls and of the, the, the feeling that people are having, and there's something needs to be done, and, and done is know, I would like you to revisit, uh, if we have to meet with the sheriff, how do we get more cars and not having two police officers in one, one car? Two law enforcement, sorry, not police officers, two law enforcements in one car, when we brought them in to help, being in the car next to another officer, for me, I don't think, i- 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 I think it's a waste of resource, that's for me. But Mr. Kimbrough?
Yeah, can I speak to that? From, uh, just to follow up on what the chief said, it's, it's, it's officer safety. The thing is, when you, when the officers are riding around one man in a car, they still can't take, and, and I know we're covering more ground with more folks on the ground and in the cars, but in the eventuality that something does happen, it's just, it's not safe to respond as a single officer to say a shooting or one of those type of incidents. Uh, been there, done that, so you, you want.
Yeah, but when I see an incident, I see tons of officers responding. I never see one. I see cars flying up the street, three and four at a time, so I never see
Right.
one responding, uh.
It's, it's.
And also, and also, we'd like some help in Arbor Hill area as well. We have these motorbikes zooming up many, uh, just, I mean, there's thirty people up there. Uh, they could be helping with that, they could be helping, you know, taking down license plates of those doom buggies up there, doing pop willies, when I, that, and that's what I'm talking about. We, I don't hear a plan on how we're going to deal with these, these issues. I mean, I'm pretty sure, Chief, you've heard, we have these doom buggies up in Arbor Hill every night, and there's thirty of them. Have, have we sent someone over there to start taking out license plates? To make sure they're registered, to move them on? We can't have this because, uh, uh, of this emotional feelings. We cannot allow the quality of life issues to be ignored and the disturbances that are happening in, in these, in our neighborhoods. I, I do appreciate, uh, you, you trying to be sensitive to the fact of how people are feeling, but we have to set a tone also that you just can't come in Arbor Hill with thirty motorbikes and Papa Willie and be noisy all night long, and they feel like no one's going to say anything, and no one's going to do anything. That's what the presence is there for, is to deter. The presence is there to let people know, when you come into the city of Albany, you're not going to be riding motorbikes up and down doing Papa Willie's, being double parked, uh, creating traffic. So, I, I mean, that's how I'm seeing it. I mean, we got extra people here, let's figure out how do we use them.
Right, a- and I agree with that. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, and we kind of are talking about gun violence, and we're kind of moving over into quality of life. All, all of this stuff is important, and of course, the quality of life stuff, that, that's my area. The hill, uh, uh, over there, Manny Boulevard, by the firehouse, that, really, there absolutely does need to be a better response from APD up to, to that. Um, but, uh, the one other thing that I wanted to mention was what, uh, uh, Councilmember Johnson said about the non-compete clause. Um, we're trying to build a police department, uh, uh, a body here to, to protect our citizens. If, if folks sign the book, get hired, and then they take off, it's just, it's, it's counter to, to what we're trying to do here. So we, we should really find out a way to get a commitment from re- recruits to, uh, to stay here at least five years. A- a- and again, go, coming into the deal, they, they know they have to stay for five years, so when they, if they want to run and leave for the state police or, or what have you, they, they know they're locked in, and, uh, we, I think we should be trying to get that agreement from them, because otherwise, we're just going to keep banging our heads against the wall on this issue of manpower. Uh, that's a huge, uh, ding, uh, and to, to what we're trying to do, we're building the police department. So.
Your Councilman, let me just address real quick the, uh, motorbike issue. And we've, we've got, that's another, you know, Councilman Robinson, talked about the, uh, gift details. We've actually had officers out over the last week or so, that using those gift funds to address specifically, uh, the motorbike issue. But, you know, and, and again, you know, we's, you know, we're prioritizing some of our resources as well. Obviously, we've got the crime that we're dealing with, and, and other stuff. Um, but that's certainly one that we've, uh, we've given some priority to, and, and we, we actually are dealing with that issue.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, I'm having conversations with folks that are actually on the ground, and so they're dealing with it day-to-day. There's some programs running out of Arbor Hill over there, uh, at the new courts, where, uh, you have some of the city employees and some community folk that are trying to teach kids, and those, those bikes are there, to the extent that, I, I mean, they're, they're, in, in my understanding, it hasn't happened when I was over there, but folks are coming with bikes on trailers and four-wheelers on trailers, rolling them off, and then having a session. Um, and I don't want to put the fire department on, on blast, but, uh, you know, I've had conversations with some of those members also, because their, their house is right there, um, that they, you know, they have to get in and out of in emergencies, and some of this stuff that's going on. They feel frustrated also. Um, so just, uh, if you can take that to heart and keep it in mind, uh, when, uh, you all are doing enforcement over there.
Okay.
Kelly, if I, if I could jump in?
Yes.
Like, if you, like, if you go over there and you look, those aren't even people from our community. Like, that's the sad part about it, you know? Uh, we got people coming from outside of our community and, and, you know, breaking laws like it's okay. So, you know, like, that's a, um, you know, a, a, a huge concern, you know, like, some people in the, uh, community feel like it's entertainment because it's nothing to do, right? And that just speaks to, you know, what's really going on, because when you talk about, um, some of the things like the, uh, bike ride, you know, the quality of life stuff, it, 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 it factors in in, in many different directions. Uh, we aren't doing the, um, proactive, uh, uh, stuff with the youth, so, you know, um, they don't have to get recruited anymore because they're right there. You know, there's no place for them to go, they're standing right outside next to the, the, the nonsense. So, you know, um, I, I, I've said this, um, to, to the chief, um, one-on-one, you know, um, our city was in, in, in a bad state before he came aboard. And, you know, uh, we have had a, uh, a, a gang violence problem, a group violence problem for, uh, a long time. And it, you know, it wasn't, it was being addressed by the, um, last administration poorly, and you know what? It's not being addressed at all because we don't have a gang, uh, program anymore. You know, once, uh, eight years ago, we would have been able to call Cook Barrett, and Cook Barrett would have been able to, um, let people know what was going on, or at least, um, have conversations with, uh, key people that are out here, um, um, involved in this type of, um, stuff. So, you know, um, the, 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 the consensus of the conversation that you're hearing throughout the city from people that, um, are, are in their fifties, when we look at what our kids have today versus what we had uh, many yesterdays ago, there's the answer right there. There's nothing being put into our youth, you know, um, um, in their early stages, that is going to, that the city can pull out in their later stages. So, until we start addressing the, uh, systemic, um, neglect that's been going on throughout the city, you know, things like this are going to keep on popping up, and they're going to be in vessels that you don't understand, because there's no, there, there's no way you can understand this organized, um, 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 empty energy, because that's what it is. There's nothing for, um, um, five-year-olds to do, and it's nothing for fifty-five-year-olds to do in this city. Uh, uh, you know, pretty much, everything has been taken away, and the things that remain are just somewhat of the old program. So, you know, a lot of stuff, I benefited from a lot of stuff that was taken away, and that's why you hear me advocate and champion, you know, um, um, we need to spend, we need to have environments for kids who don't want to be involved in this, uh, foolishness. So, thank you for your time.
Yes, that, thank you, Chief. Did, do you want to say anything in closing, or?
Yeah, I simply want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I, and I thank all the members of the council for, you know, their support. You know, I'm asked often, you know, what type of support do I, does the police department get from our elected officials? And, but my answer is always, uh, we, it's just top-notch. I appreciate it, I appreciate your understanding, I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to talk about what's happening. I, I appreciate you sharing with me what you're hearing, because you represent the people in your, in your wards. And so I need to hear that, I take these, these things back to the police department, and we make adjustments when it's appropriate. And, uh, again, and lastly, you know, I just want to say, I, I, I hear, uh, very clearly the, uh, the pain and the frustration and, and concern from members of our community. It pains me to hear that people fear walking outside and having their kids outside. You know, the quality of life things, you know, it pains me to hear it, and that's why, you know, I'm making sure that we're utilizing our resources in, in the best way possible in order to address these things. And moreover, I'm very, very optimistic that we're proceeding on a very, very positive trajectory in terms of addressing these things. We're in, we're in some dark times, right? There's no way around it. You know, it's, um, very difficult, very challenging times, but I see, I see the light, I know that we're getting there, and if we can continue what we're doing, you know, I see us getting back to a place where this community, uh, it's, where this community expects. I look forward to working with you all as we get there.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Okay. So to, uh, continue the meeting, um, uh, onto our agenda, uh, I, I want to, because we took a, a bit of time with the chief, to, to pull in, uh, uh, Mr. Sheehan uh, in relation to Resolution House seventy, seventy-two twenty R. It's a reappointment, uh, as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. The other two members, uh, participated, uh, in a previous, uh, meeting that we had, and we, we just wanted to hear from Mr. Sheehan. Are you, uh, here? I can't, I only, uh, I have limited visibility here on my tablet. Mr. Sheehan, are you here?
Yes, thank you. And I, I, okay, thank you. I just want to say, thanks for letting me, um, hang around and, and listen to the, listen to the chief talk about all the issues, and of course, we hear about it nightly. And, um, I, I just, um, I'm, I'm very appreciative for giving me that kind of inside look on what, you know, on how he responds, and your, you know, your well-thought-out questions. So, uh, thank you very much on that. And so, yes, I would like to, um, uh, right now, I am the, in terms of the Sustainability Advisory Council, um, I would, you know, be certainly willing and appreciative to serve another three years, first off, that's the resolution. And I just want to say that we're, I'm, I'm the, um, I'm, I'm the vice chair of the, uh, of the, of the Advisory Committee. It's the Sustainable Advisory Committee, and I'm the Energy Chair, and we're doing, and we are working on a lot of good stuff. And what we're trying to do, it, it really, briefly, is kind of get ahead of the curve, because what's happening statewide, as many of you may, may know, is the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. And that's a New York state law, and it's going to, it's going to force buildings to be, to be more energy efficient, and be forced the city to be more energy efficient. And so we're trying to address that. And just a couple of quick examples, we're trying to, uh, work through a, what they call an assertive stretch code, where you have to make your buildings, whether it's like a gut rehab or a new building, commercial or residential, make it more energy efficient, to save more energy, to reduce greenhouse gases, of course. Um, we're working with the IDA, um, and Sarah Reginelli, to put a new sustainability category in their funding, uh, classifications, in their funding criteria, so that people have to, so that, uh, developers have to make their buildings more energy efficient, or incorporate green energy into it, um, before they get the, the tax, the IDA tax breaks that they get. Uh, two more things, we're working on this thing called PACE Financing, which is a, a financing mechanism for homeowners to, um, to, to provide a, a pot of money so they can undertake these energy efficiency upgrades or renewable energy, like, like a photovoltaic system on the roof, or something like that, where they would pay that along with their mortgage. So, um, I just want to say, thanks for, uh, you know, considering me in this. And so you have probably, you might not all have seen it, but we just released our, what turned out to be basically a two-year report, and my colleague Tina Lieberman and Dan, we're talking about that last night, obviously, but, um, um, that had to be a two-year report, you know, we had issues with COVID, of course, and it, and then we had leadership change, and that kind of threw us off. But anyways, it's, it's a two-year report, and, um, I just want to let you know, too, just one last thing. I had it, um, at, at, at my expense, which is not, not a big deal, but I just want to point out that I had the, uh, report merged, we had to merge the, uh, the Word documents and the, and the Excel documents into, into, into one document that looked good, and I think it looks professional. And I had all, some, some copies printed out, if any of you want, I'd be glad to make those available to you. And I had those printed, um, down at, to, um, uh, Avril, um, and his colleagues down at ACS Printing, on two fifty-five Orange Street, did a great job putting it together for us. And that's where I take all my printing. Okay. So once again, tha- thanks for the, uh, thanks for the opportunity to, uh, talk to you all about it.
Uh, Pete, I just want to point out to everyone that you have been on the, uh, committee since its inception in two thousand fourteen, and, uh, very important leadership position as chair of that committee for quite a few years. So, uh, we really appreciate your service up to this point, and are very grateful you're willing to continue your service. So, thank you, Pete.
Thanks, Kathy. It's, it's good working with everybody. Everyone on the committee is really, um, you know, really dedicated. Our new energy manager, Jason, is, I think, is, uh, turning out to be very solid, and we're providing support and everything to him too. So, thanks, Kathy, and all.
Great. Uh, thank you, Mr. Sheehan, for being willing to, uh, stay with us. Uh, any members have questions or comments for Mr. Sheehan? Again, I, I can't see hands on my tablet. Nothing? Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Sheehan.
And thank you.
Forward to working with you in the future. Great. Okay, so let's, uh, move, uh, into, uh, the top of the agenda. So, uh, sorry. So, uh, start at the top, uh, for approval of minutes from a previous meeting, uh, we'll have the, uh, I'll be offering the August third meeting minutes, uh, for passage. Okay, next, uh, to consideration of local laws. Uh, we'll have Local Law K by Ms. Farrell, uh, which will be going to finance, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, regarding, uh, the billing of the, the, the trash fee, the collection anyways. That'll be going to finance. Okay, uh, next, uh, we'll have Local Law L by Ms. Love. That will be going to council operations, uh, and it's a, a local law amending, uh, residency requirements for council members. Again, uh, that, that will be going to council operations.
Can, can I ask a quick question on that? Um, and I don't know if JR has looked into it, the, as it, it requires a, uh, public referendum. Um, and I don't know if the intent was that this be on the ballot for this November or not. I don't think under the timelines, under, I guess, the general city law, that there was enough time for that. But I don't know if JR, if you can respond to the timelines and the requirements for that, and if, uh, there was enough time, if it was moved out, but.
Um, I didn't check into that timelines yet. I'll get back to you on that one, then.
Okay, because I think it's no less than sixty days before, after adoption. So I, if, if the intent was for it to be on this November's ballot, I don't think there's enough time to do that. I just wanted to clarify that, and I don't know if it was Joyce's intent to try to have this done in time to.
I just wanted to clarify that. And I don't know if it was Joyce's intent to try to have this done in time to be on the ballot for this November or not. So if you can just clarify that.
I, I can't speak for the sponsor on that one, but I will look into, I will look into the timelines. I, I had a, I had a notes on it. I just can't find my notes on it right now.
No problem. Thanks.
Yeah. And is Ms. Love here? Do you care to?
I don't think she's here.
He's not here.
Love was here. Unfortunately, she did indicate that she was leaving. I don't believe she's feeling well at the moment, but she was here. Okay.
Okay. So, uh, so again, it's going to council operations and we'll work on, if we don't meet the timeline, we'll have to do it down the line. So, uh, next, um, in our agendas, consideration of vetoes. So what we're, we're trying right now with leadership and the administration, trying to work through, and several council members to work through the issues with Mr. Howie's ordinance. It's, uh, you know, 1581, 19. We're trying to work through the issues. Should we, you know, be able to come up with something that's mutually agreeable? This may not be up for vote, but otherwise, if we can't come to an agreement, well, this will be on the agenda for our next meeting. Okay. Next, on to consideration of ordinances for introductions by council member Robinson. Ordinance number 168220, that will be going to finance. And that's an ordinance authorizing the sale of a lot at 109 Third Street. Mr. Robinson, would you like to, to just kind of give a brief intro on that or no? Okay, it's going to finance so that the conversation and discussion can be had there. So, uh, moving on to consideration of resolutions. Introduction of Resolution 748220, that's council member Robinson's. That'll be going to human resources, human rights. It's a reappointment of Matisha Alexander as a member of the Commission on Human Rights. Again, that, that's going to human resources and human rights. So that could be discussed there. You got something, Richard?
Yeah, I, I, she was just appointed for, I think she was just appointed for a short, short term. And so this is just technically, I don't know if it was maybe a month or two months on the term she was appointed for. So this would, just appointed to her full term. I mean, you know, I don't know if.
You can ever pop into a caucus or one of our meetings just to say.
Yeah, I mean, she, she continues on nevertheless, even if we don't do it on Monday, but just noting that.
Okay.
Does she have to come? I mean, she was here about six months ago or something?
Right, and that's, I remember that.
Six months ago.
Yeah, yeah. So that, I mean, if members are comfortable with it, I mean, it's not controversial or anything like that. I mean, I'd be fine with us passing it. If anyone has an, has an issue with it, please speak now.
Yeah, just some thought. I mean, otherwise, if we don't do it on Monday, since she's already on, she'll continue on anyway, so it has no impact. And I believe the Human Rights, Human Resources Committee does have a meeting coming up in any event in which this could, if.
Yeah, they can have a conversation about, yeah, okay. So introduction.
Never mind. Sorry.
All right, right. So we can't, so we can't do it. Okay. All right. So the idea is the intro and, uh, she's fine on there until we can get around to having her pop in. We'll pass it after, after that. So next, Resolutions 70, by myself, is 758220R. And it's, it's Resolution Adopting Local Government Retention Schedule. It's based on what, you know, the state recommends or their guidelines. So that will be a pass. Does anyone have any questions regarding that? No? Okay.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
I, um, I think that it would be helpful if we received an email with at least a link to the retention schedules that we are adopting. So that people are aware of, um, you know, what we're approving, essentially, the substance of, of what we are approving. I don't think that there's any issue in it, but I do think that it's helpful to be mindful that there are these retention schedules for various records and to know that we are essentially obligating ourselves and the entire city to comply with those schedules.
So would you rather not pass it, hold it until members can review those schedules? Because I have no reason to do that.
No, I, I, I thought I had sent an email to leadership mentioning this. So I don't think that there's necessarily a need to hold it, but to get those links to people before the vote. I would think in the next day or two that, um, you know, it, there's something.
I have the link. I'll send it to you.
Yes.
It's primarily a formality because we are following the MU1 schedule, which expires at, at the end of this year. And the state requires that the governing body of the municipality legislatively enact rule, accepting LGS1. So it's a formality. And because we have a shared service agreement with Albany County Hall of Records, we, we have to do that and then make sure that the Albany County Hall of Records has it. I have the link on my computer right now. I'll just forward it out to everyone so you have the ability to adjust.
Offhand, do you know what the retention schedule is for emails?
Um, I do not off the top of my head know the retention schedule for emails because I typically revisit this for retaining the applications for the New York State Department of Health and vital record, vital record documents. But I'll take a look and see. I'll do a quick personal search and get right back to you, council member leadership.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. On to Resolutions Hell. We've got a few in the queue. It's, it's the appointments of, of, to the Sustainability Committee. That's, that's on, for, up for vote will be number 12 on the agenda, which was, uh, actually, excuse me. So, uh, Mr. O'Brien, you, you with us? I can't see you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so you're, you're up also. Resolution, uh, 627120 is, is item number 10 on the agenda. We got through the amendments and we're, we're ready to move.
Yes.
On the, on the brownstone sites.
Yeah, that came out of a committee with some amendments and a favorable recommendation. So I'm going to move it on Monday.
Okay, okay. So number 10, Resolution Hell will be moved. Next, number 12, which is Resolution 69720, that's reappointing Andre Lake to Sustainability Advisory. And that'll be passed. Number 13 is, uh, Pete, 13 is Resolution 707220R. And that's Pete Sheehan, his reappointment and to Sustainability Advisory. And he just spoke, so members got to hear from him. That's number 13. That'll be a pass. It's 707220R. Uh, and then number 14 is 71, on the agenda, number 14 is 717220R. Uh, and that's for Tina Lieberman and reappointing her to the Sustainability Advisory Committee as well. So I believe that.
Kelly?
Uh huh.
Go ahead. Yeah, um, Resolution that was held for number nine, Resolution 4961, as relates to student loans. I'd like to bring it up for a vote, actually. I know that it passed. You know, we all said that we're going to support it. And I held it to try to get some students to speak, then COVID hit. But I'd like to bring it up for a vote on Monday.
Okay. So, okay. So members are aware, we're adding number, number nine, to bring up for a vote.
Thank you.
That's Resolution 496120R. We have anything else?
Can I just ask if Michelle, you can resend that resolution out? Because it's been a while since I saw it.
Okay. So with that sent out, any other, any other questions or comments or thoughts? No?
Just real quick, Kelly, I wanted to talk to members that I sent the letter out from regarding the 76 project.
Yes. Okay.
Good. All right, just give me one second. I'll pull it up. So we received a request from the developer for the 76 project. This is an email that I sent out earlier to council members. This just came in. It was discussed at last night's Planning Board meeting regarding their demolition review and develop, major development plan. And I've discussed this with the Planning Department as well. The Planning Department told me that they don't have an opposition to commence review, but generally, they do not do this until the zoning map amendment is done, which we are still working on. And I will be providing a memo regarding the findings for SIKER, amongst other things. But this is just a simple request to allow the Planning Department and the Planning Board to review. But with this letter, the developer and their attorneys are, have stated they are aware that if the common council does not approve the zoning map amendment, that they understand that they were forfeiting their fees and that the, they, you know, they will withdraw their development plan application. So I, you know, just for, um, just wanted to give members a heads up on that. And if there is a consensus, I can let Planning Department know that they can go ahead with the review if anybody has questions or if anybody's opposition.
I have a question.
Yes, Richard.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with coordinated review, but isn't the Planning Board required to review the Rezone and make a recommendation to us prior to our acting?
They have, they already sent that. It's already.
Have they already done that?
Yes, it's before, it's been sent to the members. I want to say, I sent that not too long ago, one week or two.
Yeah, it was an email.
And some of the issues that we would do, I mean, they haven't looked at those issues, so.
Could you say that one more time? You cut off.
Uh, I, I guess the issues that they would have looked at, the issues that would be part of coordinated review were not ones that they looked at as part of their review process. In any event, I have no objections to coordinated review or anything like that.
Yeah, so this is just, this is just a review that they, it's really a coordinator review in air quotes. This is just that, a request that they commence the review of that while we're still reviewing ours. So, um, yeah, I believe Ms. Frederick had something to say on that.
Yeah, just to jump in quickly, I was on the planning meeting last night and I did speak as the sponsor of the Rezone that I was comfortable with them operating in tandem with us. And they're obviously, as JR said, aware of the fact that they're taking on the risk in, in doing this, the developers.
Okay.
So does any members have any opposition, any, just, just so that way I can know going forward to, you know, letting the planning departments, any opposition to it?
No.
No.
Okay.
Right. And again, just to emphasize, they understand that in the event that something happens down the line and there's not an approval, then there's, uh, they're just out of luck, for lack of a better way of saying it. Anyone have anything else?
I do, Kelly. Um, I just wanted to do, in terms of the budget and the potential budget concerns about the impact of COVID in our current budget, there's not any new information at this stage from the federal government. They aren't sure when that information will be coming. They were hopeful about this week, but we're ready to, I've been urging the administration to give us information as they have it. And at any point that we have it, I do plan on doing an emergency finance meeting if there's not a public meeting already coming up. I also met with Mike Wheeler and David Gallon to talk about the budget process. And I have a document that I'll be sending out. What we wanted to do is kind of make sure that individual council members were able to share their wards' priorities. We are each representatives of our specific neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods are all very unique and have different needs and different focuses. So making sure that those specific focuses can be shared with the administration, understanding that the budget is what it is. There is not extra money. And just because we're sharing those priorities does not necessarily mean that they will all be covered. But it also means that it allows that the administrative might be more aware of them. In the past, they would do that with individual meetings, the mayor and the council member. I'm not sure that everybody has the ability to do that or the desire to do that. So I think the mayor is definitely open to doing that if people want to do that. But you can also just write down priorities and share them with, with the mayor's office. And I have this in a document that I'll send out. The other thing is to come up with overall council priorities. And I think we can discuss that at probably our next caucus, although I should check in with Kelly on that one. And to, and that would just be kind of an overall thing as we're looking at the city, if there's some general things that we're seeing issues with. And this is something, really, I'll be looking at the, the budget memo from years past, which will still exist. But to kind of put some of those pieces in a less formal way out ahead of time to help inform the processes they're looking at, as they're looking at the budget. It will not take the place of the budget memo that we'll be doing at the end, or that I will probably be doing at the end. And the last piece, I, not that we need any extra finance meetings about the budget, but I do think it's important, as the budget is forming, to check in with budget and have an overall meeting about, they're not going to be able to give us specific numbers because that's what the actual budget is about. They don't have revenue projections until that stage. But they can talk about different pieces, about how it's forming, how it's coming together, what things are looking like. Especially with this current budget, with so many unknowns, I think touching base would be an important thing. I also talked to them about the five-year capital plan, and this is a special one for Judy, who's, she's probably in a different direction, but you're like right next to me on my screen. And I think that we need to do a finance committee meeting for that as well, just on its own. And I, I said that they need to kind of get that draft form out to us as soon as possible. They are still working on it. I don't have any other information. I know that you want to ask about that, Judy. Please, you're welcome to ask questions, but I don't know that I have the answers for it. But I, I think that that's, we need to kind of take that separately from the budget because that is, that groundwork needs to be laid. And I know Judy's done a ton of work on that, so I want to make sure. that groundwork needs to be laid. And I know Judy's done a ton of work on that, so I want to make sure that we can kind of give that its own attention separately. So, go ahead, Judy.
So I just want to point out that the recommendation from the OSC in their little report, it's not particularly lengthy, talks about good capital planning processes. And one of the things that you're supposed to do is you're supposed to establish policies about what gets funded through capital, through borrowing in your capital budget and what gets funded out of the budget itself. And, and also, you know, looking at priorities. And usually, they suggest that that's usually part of a public process. So I saw somebody from the Budget Office, Nick, who said to me that, oh, we're working on that document. Well, what about the whole idea of actually, like, so he's working on the capital planning document, what they want to spend money on, and what we keep on missing is having policies and procedures and priorities overall that then informs what you should be doing with regard to, you know, the funding of particular projects. So, I encourage you or maybe Michelle to send out to the whole council again, that particular document. What I like about that, what I like about what the OSC does is they put it in larger type. Not so many words on a page. It's pretty easy, it's pretty easy reading and it makes a lot of sense. And I would really like us, these are good capital planning processes. And that's what I would really like to see the city adopt, is follow a pattern, follow the recommendations of the experts. You know, this isn't just, jump through a group, the five-year plan is in the, in the city charter. It's in there for a reason. And, you know, reading that particular report, that's, that's part of it. And understanding what we want to prioritize collectively as a city with the mayor and her leadership.
We will, I think that we have the potential to do that. The level that we'll be able to hit this year's capital plan, we'll see. But it's, will be, we'll have a dedicated meeting for it in, in September and we'll be looking at what the Budget Office has been working on. Joe, did you put your hand up? Richard, go ahead.
Yes, I did. I just want to note that also, the, as far as what they're supposed to be doing this year is to provide us with the capital, budget, capital plan. They have to give us a four-year look back at projects by Ward and also a timeline as to whether or not projects were completed. And there's a whole very enhanced reporting requirement that they need to incorporate into what they give us. Ideally, all of this would be incorporated into the budget book, where, which is what it should be, so that it's very transparent. But there's a...
Doing that, yeah.
Excuse me?
They are planning on having it. It's going to be part of the budget book, but it's on a separate section.
That, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that they include those extensive four-year retroactive reporting requirements by Ward in terms of what the prior capital investments were.
That's part of the equity.
Yeah, and the only, the only capital projects that are exempt are ones at the landfill. So every capital project, it's not just streets and sidewalk construction. It's every capital project that's part of the capital budget has to be broken down by Ward. And it has to be, you know, the four-year look back and also assessment as to whether it was completed or not completed in timeline, so they'd need to, to incorporate all of that into their capital budget and what they give us.
All right, are there any other questions?
Dargo, did you have your hand up? I didn't want to miss you.
I think he was waving. I think he's ready to go.
I'm ready to go.
I'm all done, so...
Okay, it's also, I asked a question in the leadership meeting about the the in-house paving and they really didn't, couldn't give us an answer on that. Tom Hoey asked the last meeting that we had whether or not those would, those projects would still be occurring and we didn't really get a complete answer on that. We're still touch and go with, as with all of the finances and all the stuff we have going on, so we'll keep asking and stay on top of it. So, if there's nothing else, a move re-adjourned?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, all right. Everyone, good night and be safe.
Have a good night, everybody.